Good evening and welcome to the January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Regular Board of Education Meeting. We'll start with a roll call, please, from Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. And we'll start off the meeting with Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at the start of every school board meeting, we read our vision and mission statement. Our vision statement reads achieving distinction in all that we do, while the mission statement reads cultivate an inclusive, high-performance culture of growth and community. Moving on, we will be talking about a strategic plan update, Dr. Abbott.
Yes, good evening. This evening, there we go, a strategic plan update, and as you just shared, our vision and mission, and also our three goals, our five-year goals, that of high performance, that of an inclusive culture of growth, and that also of community distinction. And we're going to spend most of our time this evening in just that, that place of distinction. And as you've heard me report over the past two or more years, one of our ongoing efforts related to our new strategic plan is to more regularly share updates, examples, and areas of focus related to our three main goal areas, more of an ongoing update rather than a once-a-year special occasion. This evening, I'd like to provide our board and larger One Fort community with just a glimpse of the district's efforts related to community distinction, our goal of the district being the preferred educational option in the region, as evidenced through annual growth in our pupil count and open enrollment. Now, as I've reported throughout the conceptualization and later development of our strategic plan, as well as at just this October's Board of Education meeting, overall geographic student enrollment is an issue for public schools across much of the state and nation, and most of that is truly about birth rate. That being said, also, as I reported in October, we were pleased to see an uptick in our open enrollment numbers. Those are students choosing to come in from other school districts to ours, while a few of our students, of course, choosing to attend school elsewhere. The need for a robust, creative, contemporary, and evolving program will continue to be vital and necessary. That is our ability to align to the market, or what people need and want and desire in a public education school setting, and thus our ability to recruit learners that is more of significance. As our One Fort community is aware, we have a wide range of, a wide array of incredible things happening within each and every one of our schools. Admittedly, I don't believe that we have always been the best at sharing our sense of distinction with our larger community. Sometimes, it just comes down to, well, it's just because of what we do here in Fort Atkinson, and we take some things for granted. We take for granted some of our incredible attributes just because we see them as part of what we do each and every day. The reality is that teaching and learning happening, those activities and those offerings within our schools, they are simply amazing, and they really should be celebrated each and every day. Our One Fort team, district and community, needs to continue sharing in our celebrations of success, leveraging those successes for the betterment of our students, staff, and community. And hopefully, you will continue to see a more creative and aggressive marketing strategy from our district. We need to spread the word and to work of our team and these successes of our learners. And to that end, over the upcoming weeks, you will see the launch of our four-year-old kindergarten, as well as our five-year-old kindergarten marketing and communication efforts, as well as a more aggressive enrollment campaign. Our schools are going places, and the kids are moving into better and better programming each and every year. The school district of Fort Atkinson is excited for the addition of the flourishing first steps, as well as the mini movers to our One Fort families with younger children. These offerings for birth to four-year-olds allows families and childrens the opportunity to attend a guided play group two times per week, and our mini movers will be getting underway in the very near future. Open to all community members, these programs are a chance for families to connect in a child-centered, engaging environment, and have been a simply fantastic addition to our One Fort program of offerings. When we talk about being a district of distinction, it necessitates that we are a comprehensive district who offers an incredibly wide range of learning opportunities, community-building activities, clubs, activities, varied programming, and much more. And to do all of those things well, we need to serve all of our students within our district. This evening, I am proud to recognize just a few of our district's distinctions of late, and to be certain our recognitions tonight are not all-inclusive. That would simply be impossible. We will bring a strategic plan distinction update to the board later this year to share with our community once again that hard work does pay dividends. This evening, I will share a little bit about a number of celebrations. Those being recognized will have certificates awaiting for them in their schools later this week. And the images and names that I shared this evening will be provided to the media, as well as used in our social media channels over the course of this winter. We all know that the number of likes or certain emoticons are actually what shows distinction in some of our circles. We'll celebrate everyone present who is being recognized this evening with a round of applause at the conclusion of my comments this evening. A group of students representing the school district of Fort Atkinson achieved highest honors at a recent Word Masters Challenge, a national vocabulary program involving nearly one hundred and twenty-five thousand students annually. This challenge is offered annually as part of the English Language Arts Services through our Gifted and Talented Program. Fourth grader Adler Snyder and fifth graders Esme Bastine and Elena Felon each earned a perfect score of twenty on the challenge. Nationally, only thirty-eight fifth graders achieved this result. This larger Fort Atkinson Word Masters group, which comprised of fourth and fifth graders, also received national recognition, scoring an impressive one hundred and ninety-two points out of a possible two hundred in the first of three events this year, placing fourth in the nation. Seven students from the school district of Fort Atkinson achieving outstanding achievement recognition awards based on their results, including fourth graders Colton Bree, Greta Dunham, fifth graders Piper Geffert, Mira Kelly, Cleo Knapp, and Briggs Lutke, as well as eighth grader Jude Clayton. The students have been judged in preparation for the Word Masters Challenge by Nancy Lesking, our GT Program Assistant. Athletic programming and athletes have long been a sense of Black Hawk pride here in Fort Atkinson, and it is customary for the board to recognize our state qualifying athletes and teams. This evening, we are pleased to congratulate members of our cross-country team, in particular, our state cross-country meet competitors Mary Warden and Ben Stricker. The entire cross-country team had a phenomenal year with a great improvement seen by all of our team members. Our state, our cross-country team, rather, is coached by Spencer Agnew, Aaron Krempfreiter, and Chris Reed. Our Fort Atkinson High School esports team has grown over the past few years and has excelled at competitions. For those of you who might not know what esports is exactly, esports is a form of sports competition using video games. Esports often takes the form of organized multiplayer video game competitions, particularly between professional players individually or as teams. Something I would not excel in whatsoever, or many here as well, I'm sure. We are very excited to share that our Fort Atkinson High School esports team won the state championship for the third time over the last four years. We also had Peyton Wiesen win the state individual tournament. Congratulations to our esports team this year, Peyton Wiesen, Cameron Beathard, Gabe Guston, Cal Tamblyn, Emilio Caleda Espanol, Danny Fuller, Max Caleda Espanol, Emmett Nickollins, Hattie Yaffey, and Coach Tyler Sarbacher. We are excited to share that sixth grader Cameron Holloway won honorable mention in the Wisconsin State Youth Art Flag Contest this year. That goes along with the State Art Association Teachers Convention each and every year. In December, we were pleased to host the annual Luther Arts Show here at the Luther Administrative Offices. The event was very well attended, and if you were there, you know I mean very well attended. You had to sort of edge your way through the hallway, with many students, families, and friends joining us to celebrate a variety of the arts offered here in Fort Atkinson. As is customary, the event includes members of our high school orchestra program under the direction of our music educator, Mr. Bill Callaway. And here are the names of our orchestra students who were able to join us that evening. And as part of our high school culinary program, Mr. Kevin Duncan's Pro Start One Culinary Program was well represented by his students, both in preparation of delicious refreshments, but also in serving our many, many guests. Here are a number of those students. You'll see these programs are certainly robust, especially when you're looking at eleventh and twelfth graders in those programs alone. We are excited to have many pieces of artwork here on display at Luther, and they remain on display for those who would like to come and take a visit, including pieces from students at Berry Elementary School from art educator Mandy Zirath, as well as the Luther Elementary Art Represented, again, with art educator Mandy Zirath. Purdy Elementary with art educator Carrie Hill had a number of pieces still on display here at Luther, as do students from Rockwell Elementary, again, with art educator Carrie Hill. Fort Atkinson Middle School students have a number of pieces on hand for the community's enjoyment, as well as Fort Atkinson High School, Fort Atkinson Middle School art educators there, Randy Niemeyer and Tess Sechter. And then at Fort Atkinson High School, a number of students represented with art educators Angie Zabo and Ashlyn Minx. And again, all of these names and slides will be provided to the community later for further recognition as we celebrate all of these artists throughout the course of the winter. Each year, a piece of artwork from each level is selected to be permanently displayed here at Luther. This year's award winners are Kendall Hill from Purdy Elementary School, Tristan Damershan Hassan from Fort Atkinson Middle School, and Kalen Hogg from Fort Atkinson High School. Again, a hearty congratulations and thank you to all of our orchestra students, our Pro Start students, as well as our artists from throughout the school district. The school district of Fort Atkinson has been honored for the eleventh year in a row as one of the best communities for music education as designated from the NAMM Foundation for its outstanding commitment to music education for the two thousand twenty-three, two, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Now, in its twenty-fourth year, the Best Communities of Music Education designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate an outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access to all students. We are on a streak, and we're certainly not going to break that now. To qualify for the Best Music Communities designation, the school district answered detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instructional time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making programs. Responses were then verified by school officials and reviewed by the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. A special thank you to our music educators Donna Berg, Amanda Heine, Andrea Hofelder, Bill Callaway, Justin Stager, Mitch Alabati, Sam Fettig, and Kaya Snow. And here's more evidence of that streak continuing. Over the holiday break, break, rather, we were informed that the Fort Atkinson High School production of Mean Girls, the Musical, was nominated for a great many Jerry Awards. The Jerry Awards is a statewide program that encourages, recognizes, and honors excellence in high school musical theater. We are honored to have been nominated for multiple awards this year, and we will share the results of those nominations at our July Distinction Presentation. A team of One Fort leaders were selected to present our systems approach to district and school improvement planning. That's Wednesday morning at eight o'clock in very cold Milwaukee, right downtown, just off the river. This session will spotlight our comprehensive and balanced approach to school improvement planning in pursuit of district strategic plan goals, both academic and social-emotional areas. Our district leaders from the school district of Fort Atkinson, in collaboration with Eric Larson, Director of Learning Assessment and Quadratics at CSA Six, that was just tighter, Wallocks, at CSA Six, will spotlight our data-driven and practical approach to setting annual goals, identifying district prioritized strategies, as well as engaging data teams in leadership and staff commitments in support of reaching goals for student achievement and growth. Our academic achievement coordinator Candice Sayer was spotlighted by the Peloton Consulting Group in their October newsletter for her implementation of the adaptive schools model with our One Fort Success Team leaders. Candice leads our One Fort Success Team, which is composed of teacher leaders that represent all of our teaching areas throughout the course of our entire school district. One of the tools in our district's social media toolkits is School Social for EDU. School Social for EDU helps us celebrate our staff and students by reaching thousands in our community each and every day through our social media channels. Our staff are able to quickly send in content that then they develop and share with our larger community. In our two thousand twenty-three summary, our data was compared to fifty-four other school districts in Wisconsin, and Fort Atkinson came in sixth for the number of followers and for reach in social media. For those of us, including myself, not in the social media analytics world, we'll dig a little bit into what this dead, this graphic represents. Reach on Facebook, that's the total number of people who see our content over the past ninety days or three months. Our posts have reached one hundred and fifteen thousand, which is an increase of one hundred and forty-one percent from the prior ninety-day period. Engagements on Facebook, or the number of times the audience interacted with content like likes, comments, shares, reactions, et cetera, over the past ninety days, have increased to two point, three point two thousand engagements on our posts. Share on Instagram, our total number of people who see our content over the past ninety days, have reached four hundred and ninety-four, and engagements are up eighteen percent over the last ninety-day period. So, thank you to all of those who have helped share information within our networks, and you have not already done so, please make sure to like us and follow us on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and subscribe to us on YouTube as well.
I think you're supposed to say smash that like button, but I don't, I don't really know.
And smash that like button.
Yeah, okay.
So in character for me.
Yeah.
That's, yes. This chart outlines our scores on the Wisconsin School Report Card, which we, of course, reported just a month or so ago here at our last school meeting. You'll see our two thousand twenty-one baseline data, that was what formed our strategic plan that we've been talking about this evening. You'll also note that several of our schools saw very significant gains from their baseline data, and three of our schools have reached the significantly exceeds level, which of course is the five-year goal for all six of our buildings. A special celebration to Luther Elementary School, who, I will remind people, was the highest overall school scorer among our fifty-five district-identified comparable elementary schools, as well as Fort Atkinson Middle School, number one compared to our seventeen middle schools, again, within all of our comparable districts. So, an additional congratulations to all of our schools for seeing consistent improvement and growth through the conduit of our strategic plan goals. Fort Atkinson Online Publication annually recognizes top ACT scores in the Fort Atkinson Online Readership Area after the DPI's public release of spring two thousand twenty-two accountability testing data. This year, Fort Atkinson High School was recognized as the second highest score in the readership area. They also note that Fort Atkinson High School grew six tenths of a point in their average ACT score from the previous year. Certainly, numbers that we're anxious to see continuing to grow at Fort Atkinson High School. Investing in our earliest learners always renders positive results. Continuing to invest in the literacy programming provided to our school district of Fort Atkinson 4K Partner Programs are a strategic investment utilizing the ESAR and pandemic recovery funds provided to the district. The learning this year builds upon the learning done over the course of the last year and focuses on phonological and phonemic awareness, as well as integrating phonics and interactive writing in the classroom. And there's always more to come. Things that continue to ramp up over the winter months, things like FFA, debate, winter athletics, show choir, jazz band, FBLA, archery, badger, girdles, and boys state, and much, much more. You will definitely be able to share some of those celebrations and successes later in the year to come. And with that, I would ask that anyone that's with us this evening that was recognized, if you'd please stand and let us share in a round of applause and thanking you for coming and for representing us. So, we appreciate you braving the cold, and we appreciate you representing yourselves, your schools, and our districts so, so well. Thank you so very much for your commitment. We do have certificates headed your way in the next week or so, so please look forward to those, and keep on working for those. We were really anxious to see you here again later in spring as we celebrate our recognitions once more.
It's amazing to me that we do this a couple times a year, and it's amazing that all that is done just the school year, right? So, a lot of hard work being done, and, you know, obviously, arts, athletics, and academics, we're doing an amazing job. So, I appreciate everybody coming and going through the presentation. It means a whole lot.
Yeah, it's great to see the diversity and variety by which we achieve distinction, and congratulations to all of you. I know that maybe for the brief minute that you heard your name or saw your name up on the screen, but, I mean, the hard work really means that you are being distinct in the community, being distinct in the district, and keep doing that. That will have big dividends later in life if you keep up that hard work, so.
Congratulations. One more round of applause. Thank you so much.
All righty. You don't have to stay for everything. It gets more electric as the meeting goes on, let me tell you, but you're welcome to stay.
No, no decisions have been made.
Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on for comments from audience. Do we have any comments that has been submitted this evening?
We do not.
We do not. All right, we'll be moving on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for the approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items had been provided to all board members in advance to assure for an extensive and thorough review, and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, you have item A, minutes from the December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Item B is personnel, of which you have no items this evening. Item C, approval of 4K provider contracts. Item D, high school course proposal for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That is a second ring of, read of that single course offering. Item E, mid-year compensation adjustments. Item F, foreign travel, that is the Alps and Mediterranean coast. Item G, a guest to the district, of which this evening there are none to receive, and item H, budget transfer requests, followed by item I, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented without any removals.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, we'll be moving on to item six of non-instruction, open enrollment application alert.
Yes, Mrs. Hollenberger, our Director of Pupil Services and Special Education, prepared a report as required by state statute for the board to receive in January of each year. Mrs. Hollenberger's report is included for the community to see. The board, I know, has reviewed it thoroughly as well. Essentially, what this report states is that we do not have the capacity, given our current staffing levels, nor the given needs of our current special education students, to receive special education students through the open enrollment process. So, again, this action this evening lets others know that we will not be receiving students from other districts into our special education programming through the open enrollment process.
And that's a, that's kind of a one-size-fits-all. You either say, yes, we do have capacity for special education students, and it's not based on what the need is, like if there's, you know, speech therapy needs versus, you know, more intensive needs. It's kind of a one-size-fits-all, and we just, in the last few years, we haven't been able to open enroll for special education students.
It's something that is taken very seriously and is investigated very thoroughly every year. It's certainly not something that is taken lightly, nor is it just an automatic resolution that's shared with you every fall. So, as you'll see in this report, actually is required by the DPI, you know, Mrs. Hollenberger and her team are actually required to take a look at existing staffing levels, take a look at existing caseloads, taking a look at the needs of those students within those caseloads, and then using calculations to determine whether or not there is capacity. But then, to your original question, yes, there really, you know, isn't an ability for any school district in the state to, you know, open to certain students with certain types of needs or not, or whatever the case might be. So, as you'll see in the report, as much as we would like to welcome all of the families wanting to come to the school district, of which there are many, we are just, do not have the capabilities to do so for this next year.
All right, any discussion this evening on the open enrollment application?
Okay.
Anybody?
I'll do it then. Be resolved that the Board of Education will not deny any new regular education, open enrollment application for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on available space at any grade level. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education designates that there are no available special education spaces for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five school year for new open enrollment applicants. I so move.
I'll second.
All right, a motion, a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Selly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? All right, thank you for that. Moving on to six B.
Yes, well, welcome to the podium, Nathan Knitt, our Director of Business Services. Mr. Knitt will review with the board information that was shared at your December meeting related to the potential April second operational referendum. He'll be covering two items, item B and item C. The first is a resolution to exceed the revenue cap, and the second is a resolution providing for a referendum election and potential question for approval to be shared with the community at the April second election.
Thank you. The first question, looking at why the need for an operational referendum? We talked about this at the last December, or last board meeting in December. It's been a frequent topic amongst school districts across the state for some time. But to reiterate, and specifically for the school district of Fort Atkinson, the first reason that we're looking at an operational referendum for the April second election is the previous operational, non-recurring referendum of three million dollars fell off the books starting with this current fiscal year. We're also seeing costs increase across the board for staffing, for insurance, for supplies, for contractors, gas, you name it. It costs more than it did in years past, especially in these high inflation period times. We also are seeing more competition for a tighter labor market. So, finding teachers, finding support staff members is definitely more difficult than in years past. So, the laws of supply and demand say that if there's a smaller supply, we have to pay more. So, that is another reason for operational referendum. Another item that we talked about with the WASBO video from the December meeting is the lack of increased spending authority from the state. We received a slight increase of three hundred and twenty-five dollars per member, but that has not kept up over the last ten, fifteen years with inflation. Another reason is the decline in enrollment. As Dr. Abbott alluded to earlier in the present, earlier in the meeting tonight, that districts across the state are seeing declining enrollment. And how the state funding model is set up is the dollars follow the kids, but if there are fewer kids, there are fewer dollars. The last piece that also necessitates a need for referendum is the loss of the one-time federal funding through the three stimulus packages during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. All of these factors contribute to, the end question is, we are here to meet the strategic goals. We need these referendum dollars to help meet those goals. The chart here should look familiar from last month's meeting, but to reintroduce and emphasize that the red baseline projection is where we stand with no- projection is where we stand with no operational referendum. So in the current year, the 2023-2024 year, we are looking at about a 3.1, 3.2 million dollar deficit. That was voted on last spring, or it was presented last spring and finalized in October. That we knew this year we were going to run a deficit budget with that $3 million operational referendum falling off the books and not being approved. Looking ahead to next year at 2024-2025, with no existing operational referendum, we would be just over $5 million expenses exceeding revenues. And that number is exacerbated the further out you go into the future. What we'll be proposing to have the board approve as a resolution is a six and a half million dollar referendum, six and a half million dollar referendum each year for three years. That, if that is approved by the board to put on the ballot and the community approves the vote, we would see the financial impact in the orange line above. That over a three-year period, we would be pretty close to running our expenses equaling our revenues. We would be about $1.8 million short projected as of today, but that allows the district to have some time to continue to right-size to match our needs to the students we have in the district. And that also gives us time to evaluate the assumptions built into this model. But we're confident that we're asking for an appropriate amount over this three-year period. Again, we've talked about enrollment a couple of times tonight, but highlighting that we are continuing to project that enrollment will decrease. So that $1.8 million deficit on the last slide, we would be able to correct that over time so that we're matching staffing levels to the number of students in the district. One question that comes up a lot is, what takeaways do we have from the previous referendum cycles? So again, what did we learn from the operational ballot measures from last year? The first and foremost that I've heard definitely is the ballot question needs to be simplified. That school finance is difficult enough to understand. And reading the question on the ballot, there are other ballot measures I looked at from other districts in past years, and working in school finance, I had to sit down and write. I'm like, what are they actually asking for here? So that question is very valid. And how can we simplify the ballot question? Working with our bond council, we have the question as succinct, as trimmed down as we can. In years past, we would blend non-recurring and recurring referendum questions. We said, nope, we're going to ask for non-recurring. We heard from the community that they weren't 100% sure what they were voting for. So we want to make it easy to understand how they can support us with the referendum. We're focused, and that leads into the second point of one question, one focus. What we're asking for is six and a half million dollars each year for the next three years. After that third year, the board would have to look to see what has changed with the state budget, what has changed with needs, but that we would reengage the community after three years to see where we're at. Another concern is, again, that non-recurring versus recurring, that there is some hesitation on recurring referenda, that it extends indefinitely. And that gives some voters some pause. So we said, okay, we'll come back in three years and see where we're at. And this all kind of goes back to a lot of the questions and discussion that we had from the December board meeting. A big concern with school finance in general is how do the tax levies impact individual community members? So what the district has positioned itself to do is to ask for the six and a half million dollars per year through the referendum with no additional tax impact. The district was able to achieve this through prepaying some of our existing capital referendum debt. And so we would be transferring, not transferring, we would be levying a similar amount to what we did this year, but instead of prepaying debt, we would be using it for the proposed referendum. So that we would be able to, I believe this year we prepaid about $7 million in debt, and so we're asking for a little bit less than that $7 million so that we can ensure a stable tax rate. That individual families like to plan for budgets, and we need to provide them as stable of a tax rate as possible. And historically, the district, whether it's prepaying debt, whether it's levying for operational referendum or referenda, has been very successful in achieving that stable tax rate, as illustrated on the chart here. So again, this referendum would not be an increase to the taxpayers. When looking at referendum, districts have the ability to set the levy for their, a handful of districts that choose to go one or two years. A majority of districts go three to five years. Fort Atkinson, what we're proposing is a length of three years, that it gets us through the current state budget, and it also gets us through the next biennial state budget. So we get through two budgets with this election. We'll also know the results of the 2026 gubernatorial election, and so that'll provide some insight as to the direction of education finance. It gives us some time to see where our enrollment trends do end up, that the previous chart of enrollment is a projection. It's not set in stone, but it gives us some time to see how that develops. It also, going for three years, gives us flexibility of engaging with the community at a couple of checkpoints. So we could talk to the community again in April of 2026, in November of '26, or in April of 2027. Any of those three points would allow us to go back to the community and not have the operational referendum fall off the books and have a gap year. So this chart again, just to reiterate, the need is definitely there. The district's fund balance is above $10 million, but that would be completely exhausted by the 2026-2027 school year. So without a referendum, the district would have a lot of difficult choices to make in that time period. But with a six and a half million dollar referendum over three years, we can ease that burden and the district can continue to stand out compared to its peers, and we can continue to have those offerings and all the distinctions that we had tonight. The sample ballot is as shown here. So there are two sections, I guess you would call it. The first is highlighting statute and kind of explaining the overview of what's being asked. The actual question itself is the second half down. So this is how it will look on the ballot to voters on the April 2nd election. I want to highlight, again, really to emphasize, this is the shortest and cleanest and most precise way we can ask this. But to highlight a lot of the numbers I talked about before, we're asking for six and a half million each year on a non-recurring basis for a period of three years. That would get us through the 2026-2027 fiscal year. So to go back, again, we see the orange line from '24, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27. After that, we cross that bridge when we get there. But again, just the feedback we hear continually is, make the question simpler. So this is to highlight, this is the bare bones referendum question we can ask. That being said, any last, or any lingering questions, comments, or concerns?
The, the structure of the question was formulated with help of our council, right? Our legal council?
Yes.
So on the ballot, it would just be the question at the bottom. Is that correct?
It would be both pieces. It would be the be it resolved, the top paragraph and the bottom.
Okay. So both, both elements are much reduced from the complicated questions of the past. So in, in the past, the element on the top was much lengthier as well as, as by way of describing a, a non-recurring element as well. So, you know, often we have questions about the question, you know, can you include what the impact to the taxpayer can be? Can you include, and you absolutely cannot. So with the help of, of our bond council, this truly is the most simple question and the most simple resolution above that, that the community can see. There is not a February primary, I learned last week, given other local races. So I think there will not be any confusion as to when this question is going to be asked of the community, which of course then would be on April 2nd.
Just so I understand, the only place that a person would vote would be for the question, not the, not the resolution.
That's correct.
A lot of what we hear out, or what I hear, is the confusion of, what do you mean we're asking for six and a half million dollars a year? How does that, how does that not impact my tax, my property taxes? Or we can levy it at the same amount. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yep.
I know you mentioned that previously, but...
So the direction that the district headed with the tax levy from the fall, with the capital referendum that did pass, that authorized the board to borrow $22 million, and working with our financial advisors, they set out a payment schedule over generally between 20 and 30 years. The flexibility that the board has then, because the referendum passed, you have the debt schedule, and it lays out, like, if you levy the minimum amount to pay this debt off, here's what it looks like. Districts will have the opportunity to prepay that debt to save the taxpayers on interest expenses, no different than a homeowner making an extra mortgage payment, or paying an additional amount each month so that they can pay their mortgage off in 25 years instead of 30 years. The district this year proposed, and the board approved, a budget that levied additional tax dollars to prepay some of that debt. But we levied less than we did last year, so a lot of taxpayers still saw their taxes decrease. That we maneuvered perfectly so that we can prepay the debt, save taxpayers' interest in the future, lower tax bills today, and give us that flexibility that we levied $7 million extra to prepay the debt. Next year, if the referendum passes, we wouldn't prepay the debt anymore. We'd make the minimum payments, and we'd still pay the debt off well in advance of the multiple decades that we signed up for. And we would instead, instead of levying $7 million to prepay debt, we would levy $6.5 million for operational expenses. So in the end, we'd still be levying $500,000 less, but we wanted that cushion just in case if the state funding formula changes and we get a little bit less aid from year to year, that there are some fluctuations. So we wanted a little cushion, but that we felt that $6.5 million meets the operational needs and is enough cushion so that taxpayers aren't saying, hey, like, you said it was going to be, you know, no impact, and then they see their taxes jump.
So essentially, it is changing some line items in the budget that instead of prepaying debt, which actually saves the district money in the long term to prepay it, because you're not paying interest, it's adjusting that to say, okay, we're not going to be prepaying, we're going to be using this money for operational costs. So that's the reason that the tax rate can stay the same.
Correct.
No guarantee that people's taxes won't go up. I mean, I just, I think that there's a big transparency there that I think people are like, wait a second, what about this? But all we can control is the tax rate. We can't control how much your property is worth.
Correct. Yep.
So that's really the only decision-making from the, the board, is what's the tax rate? We can, it can go up here, it could go down there, but the property value is not determined by us.
Correct. Yep. The pieces that the district can control, we are controlling in a way to keep things as level as possible, that folks don't like to see their property tax bills wildly fluctuate because the school district is levying way more or way less, that we want to keep that as stable as possible. So again, the pieces we can control, we are controlling to keep at a steady level.
And then you talked about the declined enrollment projection. And that might seem a little counterintuitive, that enrollment is declining. Why do we need more operational money? Doesn't that just mean less teachers, less students? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes. So with the state funding formula, I won't go too deep, or if I am going too deep, please stop me. But the state will look at the three-year average for enrollment, and if your enrollment is declining over that three-year average, then you start seeing the drop in the revenue limit authority. So whether it's state aid or property taxes. But the state has built in a mechanism that eases districts into that, so that's called the declining enrollment exemption. So it lessens the blow of declining enrollment, but the issue that every district is seeing is that it's not proportional. So if a school district's enrollment declines by, let's say, 36 kids year over year, on average, that's three kids a grade. A drop in one grade of three kids doesn't necessitate reducing staffing by a teacher. Your class sizes, you're just like, oh, like, your class sizes are a little bit bigger, or your class sizes are a little bit smaller, but we don't actually have room to reduce staff. But that's what the state funding formula tells you to do. So we're seeing those declines happen, that it's wide, it's spread out, so it's harder to reduce staff to meet the enrollment needs. So we're seeing that piece, but then the cost to educate kids is increasing. We're seeing inflation last year for salary purposes was, the cap was 8%. This year, it's been certified at 4.12%. So people need to get paid more. We're not oblivious to that. Health insurance costs are increasing, transportation costs are increasing, similar to the staffing issue. Just because 10 fewer kids ride the bus doesn't mean we cut a bus route. We still have those expenses built in. So a lot of the expenses that school districts incur, it's not just, oh, you have X number of fewer kids, like, get rid of something. Like, it's, unless you see massively steep declines, and we're seeing declines enough that it's hard to justify reducing what we have.
So one of the things that I, I pass boards, I think, deserve a lot of credit for, as well as the existing incurrent board, is that I, I don't think the district has ever gone to referendum for more than they actually need. And I think this slide, you know, very clearly says, you know, even with safe passage of what we need in this referendum question in passage in April, we will need to continue to right-size and really examine what and how and why we're doing what we're doing through strategic abandonment, or potentially new revenue streams and on down the line. So with this question, there is still the requirement of, of the district to continue finding cuts over the next few years. Now, do they need to be $3.8 million within 18 months? Probably not. But this, I think, does demonstrate a very specific and very clear knowledge that we need to continue to be prudent in our fiscal management and how it is that we right-size. need to continue to be prudent in our fiscal management and how it is that we right-size and operate the district based on given enrollments, as well as, as other operational expenses as well. And I think what Mr. Knitt has presented this evening is another example of the ask being what's needed, not necessarily what's wanted.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, it's an easy-to-understand question. Clearly, it's, you know, the, we're not asking for, you know, a ton of money that we shouldn't be asking for. And as, as a, you know, this is for me, my second round of referendum.
It's a blur.
Yes, yeah. But to me, I, I would really, you know, when, when, when looking at this and going through the motions, there's, there's an incredible amount of time that is spent, not only the boards, but administrator, you know, the, the school district as a whole. But I, I'm hoping at some point, we can, we can start to move forward past this referendum stuff and, and really, you know, pay more atten, pay more attention to the education that's happening within our buildings, right? I, I feel like far too much time has been spent on the referendum stuff that, you know, you know, we, we have to, we have to be financially prudent in what we're doing, but, you know, there's a ton of time being spent on this referendum stuff. And man, it would be, it would be nice to continuing to do what we need to do with, with our finances, but also, you know, be able to breathe for another three years here.
Amen.
Now, with that tax rate, so our tax rate being stable for the next three years with this hopeful passing of the referendum, that does not include school vouchers, correct?
That does not include any changes compared to what has been presented in the past. So currently, at this year, we're at about $1.7 million for vouchers. If the voucher program grows next year, or if the next biennial budget makes changes to the voucher program, that would impact the tax levy, but right now, we don't have that future information, if that makes sense.
So that's something that we cannot control?
Correct.
But this currently includes what we know to be true now?
Yep. Yes. With most up-to-date information, yes.
All right. Any questions in front of us?
Good presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much. That was great.
And I think, you know, bookending the board meeting, I mean, I know we still have one more item, but bookending the board meeting, starting it with all the distinctions and recognizing the students and the variety and the diversity by which they were achieving great things, I mean, in sports, in esports, in arts, in academics. I mean, those are all the things that we're looking to continue to support so that we have that variety, we have that diversity, we have the flexibility for students to be able to be distinct and achieve in anything that they want to do. I think that that is the big thing. We are not looking to say we want to add a whole new wing of something, something at a school. We're saying, we want to continue doing what we're doing. We want to continue to add, you know, to have the variety, the tech ed department, the arts, the music, the, I mean, of course, the academics, right? That's base, that's what we have to do, but we want to do that at a high level also. I just think that it's really important that, you know, because all of a sudden, the cheers and the clapping went to a very somber, we're going to discuss dollars and cents and levy rates and numbers and graphs and ballot questions, which we have to do, but I just think it's important to see that's why we're doing it.
To achieve distinction in all we do, right?
All right. There is no further discussion. We have some resolutions in front of us this evening.
Be it resolved by the school board of the school district of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson Rock Counties, Wisconsin, that the final school district budget, beginning with the 2024, '25 school year, shall exceed, shall include an amount not to exceed $6.5 million each year on a non-recurring basis for a period of three years through the 2026, '27 school year in excess of the revenue limits imposed by Section 121.91 of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of paying district operating costs. Be it further resolved that pursuant to Section 121.913 of the Wisconsin statutes, the foregoing resolution be submitted to electors for approval or rejection at the election to be held on April 2, 2024.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Rogers, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right. We have another resolution for us, item C60 on the agenda this evening, and obviously that doesn't need to be read.
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed, I took the short one.
Mr. President, are you asking for us to read the full resolution, or can we refer to it?
Refer to it, yep, as written.
Okay. I'll, I'll move that we pass the resolution as set forth on the agenda, and I believe it would be available for anyone that wishes to go online to read it in full.
Correct.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right. Moving to school board election information, I believe that is you, Mr. Rogers.
Okay. The deadline for filing declarations of candidacy was 5:00 PM on January 2, 2024. One elector of the district filed the necessary papers. On January 5, 2024, the declaration of candidacy and campaign registration statement forms for the candidate were reviewed and verified. The order of the name, as it appear on the April 2 ballot, will be, number one, Matt Loop. Since there is one candidate for the one open seat on the school board, a primary election is not necessary. The general election will be held on Tuesday, April 2, 2024, and everyone who is eligible to vote is encouraged to do so. The elected board member will take office on Monday, April 22, 2024. The board will be inviting the candidate to speak at the March Board Meeting.
Thank you. All right. Items for future board meetings.
Yes, you'll be receiving a nutrition services report, as well as the district audit report, along with other reports in the months to come as well.
Thank you. All right. Last one this evening.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Ms. Selly. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? All righty, we adjourn at 6:27 this evening.